All right, good evening. It's about 6:30 PM. We are joined by the Bicycle and Pedestrian, oh, sorry, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee led by Ken Burke. We know you have a presentation to give to us tonight. So with that said, Ken, floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to take a quick moment to thank you for having us at this work session. This has been a long time coming. We've been at this for almost five years. And I'll start off by first introducing ourselves one by one. Ms. Dorothy Hill is with us. She's the newest member of the BPAC from Village Kingston. Mr. James Vogel from the hamlet of Middlebridge. Myself, Kenny Burke from Wakefield. Lisa Beth Sanford from Eastdale. And Dave Hamill, Wakefield, near the New Rec Center. So again, thank you for having us here. We're going to go through a PowerPoint presentation, but please stop us at any point in time. We will be most likely asking you some questions as well, but this is intended to be pretty much an interactive discussion.
So Ken, just to let you know upfront, we've reserved a half hour for this. So if that poses restrictions, I need to just keep that in mind, and we'll try to keep this as cooperative as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can hear you, but I don't think it's going to be out.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. So the agenda tonight is to go over the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and its core features, which really surrounded initially about master planning, the process of master planning, which got really interesting throughout a pandemic. Green and complete streets in terms of its formations in a resolution and now moving towards an ordinance, and of course, community involvement. Again, challenging during a pandemic, but most recently it's been successful and face to face. We will have three specific requests of council at the conclusion of the work session. One of them will be a request for adoption of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Second one is to initiate the adoption of a green and complete streets ordinance. And lastly, an affirmation of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee as South Kingston's advocacy vehicle for bicycle and pedestrian issues for the community and for the staff. So quick history, and many of you have been part of this. Early 2000s, there was a Rhode Island Department of Health Healthy Places by Design program that was instituted statewide. South Kingston participated. And specifically, there was a subcommittee for bicycle and pedestrian issues. I think that was a significant catalyst for community members to gather and to talk about what was important to them throughout the town of South Kingston and regionally. The council, after that program, through Councilman Abel Collins as a local advocate at that point in time, proposed a complete streets resolution to the town council, which the council approved, which was wonderful. And I think, you know, looking backwards, we all learned a little bit about civics in terms of what a resolution is versus what an ordinance is versus what a master plan is. They're all needed in concert to have a well-functioning government. In 2017, what had happened, as a lot of folks had been talking about various topics, reconstruction of streets, plowing sidewalks was a big issue, or clearing sidewalks. The council considered this, and they took up the task to create this ad hoc committee, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, in 2017. We were later appointed, and then we began the process of undertaking our charge, which was, and still is, to investigate how South Kingston can be made a better place, a safer place for pedestrians, cyclists, accessibility-challenged individuals, to increase health, safety, and the well-being of our constituency while benefiting the local economy. We want to advocate for development of comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian master plan, one that did not exist. And we had to also identify funding solutions. It's one thing to talk about an idealistic version of the future, but without pairing that with funding, a lot of these goals could fall short. We wanted to review and give public input on relevant policy and planning documents. The town is in a constant cycle of assessing itself through the community comprehensive plan. There's been prior work done by the town planning department in terms of village studies. Many of these, actually, all of these planning documents all point to accessibility, but there was just one thing missing in terms of a comprehensive analysis of those bicycle and pedestrian components. And then we wanted to look at promoting a systematic method for ongoing citizen input into development of important circulation policies, plans, and projects. Pretty hefty charge. Thank you, Town Council, for all that homework. The BPAC has also provided two updates directly to the town council through our planning process, and most recently this past fall. And more recently, the BPAC held a well-attended community meeting at the Rec Center. And it was wonderful after, you know, not being able to, actually, being told we could not meet initially during the pandemic because everybody was scrambling and we were nonessential, to being able to hold Zoom meetings to finally achieve that very significant component of our programming, to talk to people, to make sure that we accurately understood the wants and the needs of community members. So there's a lot to unpack in our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, but let me just start off by saying that it is a bridging document. It does have references to our community comprehensive master plan, our village studies, and it is intended to be a living document, something that allows for public input and to get updated as needed. It is not just a static document that is intended to sit on a coffee table. We do expect that people challenge our assumptions and to update us as we make progress. And by "we," I mean the town of South Kingston. We have been supported, very fortunately, by the planning department, public safety, and engineering staff, actually through the town manager's office as well, throughout the development of this master plan. But we did want to take a moment to acknowledge that we actually developed the master plan ourselves. This includes what we call the Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan. It's a pretty extensive list of very discreet and actionable upgrades that the town could consider over time. So we did it at no cost to the town. We were very happy to do so as well. So when we started this process, we basically needed to understand and pull out of our initial charge from the council what our vision was. So we wanted to expand opportunities for residents and villages, visitors of all ages and abilities, to bike and walk comfortably and safely for transportation, including committing fitness and enjoyment. So the vision is very typically aspirational. This is our future vision for the town. And the purpose was a little bit more direct. The purpose is to inspire all levels of town government, not just within town, but also surrounding towns and actually reaching out a little bit to the state, to work toward achieving more bikable and walkable communities, enriching the current and future plans with an overarching complete streets policy, and to provide a specific recommendation or specific recommendations on how to achieve the complete streets policy goals and objectives. So it's a very hefty purpose there. In our assessment of this purpose, we went round and round and had great conversation with town staff, and then head checked with residents. A lot of folks know that there's very, very hardworking people in the town hall and all the supplemental offices, and as well as the council. So we're really looking at a mechanism to put these ideals in action. So if I can focus just for a moment on our first recommendation that we're going to ask of you. We're going to ask that the council vote to approve a resolution of the town of South Kingston so that you can adopt our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan as the town's guide to set priorities for future projects. And I'll just take a moment right now, because we have talked about this for at least a couple of years. Is it an adoption? Is it an approval? You know, what is it? We, with guidance from town staff, have acknowledged that this is a planning document, and as I said earlier, it's intended to be updated. So I think the action of the council has some legal weight, but is meant to be, it being the plan, is meant to be amended. So we want to make sure we get this language correct. And we would like that approval, and I'll volley it over to the council and town manager, and maybe we can start this dialogue of what we think the appropriate vehicle is for that approval process for a planning document.
So Jim, or Jamie Rabbit, if you want to come up as well, I just want to ask you, why would we not take action to put this into place? Is there any reason we wouldn't do so? Jamie, come on up.
With regards to the resolution in the plan, I think, and Ken alluded to it, it's really policy or resolution. Do you set a policy statement to support complete streets and adopt or report that supports a resolution? Or do you adopt a hard and fast complete street manual?
Jamie, this is different than the complete streets ordinance. This is just the master plan here.
Yeah, and that's why I'm going to that. So with regards to the master plan, it gives you guidance for the future adoption of whether it becomes policy or regulatory on every aspect. Most communities, or a good majority of them, after they've adopted a master plan, have adopted a kind of resolution policy guide for all development or projects that's undertaken by the town, that they do their best efforts to adhere to the complete street guidelines as laid out in a plan.
So enacting something like this, or getting behind a resolution like this, would only help in planning purposes?
Planning purposes, yes.
Allows to set guidelines as to what document to look to, to guide us in thinking about and prioritizing projects for the future related to biking and things like that?
Correct.
So in my mind, I really don't see a reason why we wouldn't support that. Do you agree with that?
That's a fair statement with regard to support. Again, it's a master plan. It's nonregulatory, but it begins to set policy for the town as well as the council if you adopt that. You know, to Ken's point, in a community like South Kingston, not everything fits in one basket. You know, to do a true complete street cross-section, you would need over 75 feet potentially for a cross-section with, you know, two travel lanes, parking, bikeway, sidewalk, and then buildings. We don't have many cross-sections in town that will support that, but it doesn't mean you aspire to do that in any new development or any retrofit of an existing facility or existing street in town.
So what action would the council take to approve a resolution to that effect? Just put it on the next council agenda meeting?
Yeah, you could put it on the next agenda, and town council, as well as our department and association with Mr. Burke's group, being the advisory committee, could work on the formal language of a resolution.
All right. All right, thank you, Jamie. Any other questions?
I have a question. So first, I know it's an incredible amount of work, five years of hard work. I appreciate that a lot, because I know it's a volunteer contribution. And being a cyclist myself, I certainly want to recognize all your hard work. My question, there's a lot of information in the plan, and have other, like, have the police, Department of Public Safety reviewed the plan? Has DPW reviewed the plan? And planning board, as well as planning staff? Because my fear is, we're going to create a plan that may inhibit or hinder something, and then we're stuck in a way. I don't know if I'm thinking about process, and we need the master plan, we need the BPMP, but I just don't know what the right pace or process is. So can someone answer those?
Jamie, what's your recommendation?
I can attest to the planning board has not done a formal review of the plan itself. I have read through the draft in a cursory review and manner, but we don't have any, you know, we haven't been asked to formally review it and comment on it by either the town manager's office or in support of the planning board. So again, to your point, it's been five years.
Yeah.
So if it happens to be a month or two longer to get that complete buy-in from public works and public service, planning board, and any others you see fit, only gives more credence to the document if it's adopted.
Right. I just don't want to put the cart before the horse, or the bike before the...
We can still work on that resolution without delaying that other process also. The work on any resolution that may come before you still can be drafted, even as you're seeking input from any other advisory boards or regulatory boards.
Because some, I'd be very honest, I have a very limited understanding of the scope of what's recommended and the proposed changes, but some of that is capital, you know, the capital improvement plan might need to be shifted. So just having a broad sense of what's, like, in theory, it sounds amazing, but like, sometimes the implementation is not smooth. That's all. So I just didn't want to send something.
I can say, just as we go through the American Rescue Plan Act endeavors and our shredding that we're continuing this week, we are looking at some aspects of complete streets and pedestrian bike and vehicular movements and all the areas we're evaluating. So we're doing it now without formal policy.
Thank you.
Ken, go ahead. Yeah, if I could, to share through to Councilman Berger, so it's a perfect concern. So what we have done throughout the past five years is we have worked directly with the planning staff, DPW staff, the town engineer. We had Sergeant Souza also as staff for our meetings. We have a practice of also having liaisons from our committee to other town departments and boards and commissions. So our interests, as many of these other town committees are also ad hoc, it's kind of like, you know, to your point, what is the cart, what is the horse, what is the bike, and what is the cart? How does that work? So I think we've intentionally followed initially for the first couple of years, a good planning process. And I think ultimately, this is what the intention is. This is a planning document. It is visionary. And to Jamie's point, a perfect or utopian complete streets cross-section could be very wide. We, as the members of the committee, we do know, we've got a lot of car paths, right? We've got a lot of rural roads with beautiful canopies and stone walls that we know aren't going to get changed. We're not looking for them to get changed. We're looking at how we assess each of those corridors and look for those niche opportunities to make incremental improvement that could be very, very low cost, and then also having those very aspirational costs for big-ticket items. But ultimately, that will fall to staff and then the budgeting process of the council. So we're very cognizant of that process and confident with the last two updates to the town council that this is a true master plan. It doesn't compel anybody to spend a dime more than they're doing right now.
And...
Just for a second, Tim, and we have about 11 minutes left. Just want to keep everyone mindful of that.
You hit the nail on the head. And Jim, it seems like you're confabulating two requests that we are making, actually, three. This is a resolution approving the master plan as a planning document. Green and complete streets, we are asking for something totally different, and I hope that we actually get a chance to talk about that, and we will. Okay, so whatever decision that you folks are going to be making on the master plan, please wait until you hear the requests for the green and complete streets, which is actually very critical to the whole thing working.
Maybe we'll move on to that now?
Yeah. Yep. Thank you. Excellent point, Councilwoman. So green and complete streets is the next component of our discussion. What is it, and how does it integrate to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan? It does encourage South Kingston to be more inclusive and consider the needs of all users of these corridors, bicyclists, pedestrians, transit users, and then the accessibility community as well. We're trying to specifically look at vulnerable populations, such as children, the elderly, and again, folks with disabilities. The philosophy does, as Councilwoman Berger pointed out, it applies to capital and operating projects. It's from planning through design, construction, and ongoing maintenance. So it is intended, it being the green and complete streets ordinance as a separate ask, is far-reaching. It's intended to integrate into current town operations. And we understand that that is a longer process. It has to be scrutinized, you know, through staff before that comes Following up on the green and complete streets, again, going over what I had mentioned earlier, council passed a resolution back in 2010 supporting complete streets. The Rhode Island General Assembly also passed a complete streets law to get integrated into transit options for the state's transportation system, specifically compelling Rhode Island DOT to adhere to this new philosophy. That was done in 2012. And everybody tends to ask, well, you know, we love these ideas. We never want to be the first one. How are neighbors doing? Providence has adopted their complete streets ordinance, green and complete streets ordinance. Newport has adopted one. Central Falls, Narragansett, I got a call from one of the councillors many years ago. When we formed our BPAC, she basically emulated our BPAC. And Dave and Rosemary Smith have finalized their master plan, and they're actively implementing complete streets programs within existing right-of-ways, mostly striping. So good on them. This is a picture of Old Tower Hill Road. So some of you may recall, this is intended to be a redo of Old Tower Hill Road, basically another corridor that you could land a Cessna on if you had to. We wanted to take a look at it and intervene as we were still formulating as a BPAC. And we effectively pulled together the Economic Development Corporation, the planning board, town staff, I see Mr. Shock here. We all worked together to compel Rhode Island DOT to take a sharper look at that specific corridor. And even though the final result still has some challenges, I think overall, that adoption, integration of complete streets through state funding was a success. So following up on recommendation two, and I think this is where Dave Hamill and Lisa Beth were going here, we want you to, we would like the town council to consider a green and complete streets ordinance, and that we have the staff take a very strong look at this, and to have this ordinance ready by October 1st, 2022. We have no business asking for that, but you know what? We're here. We're going to ask you to do that. Why do we say this? Because I think it's important to actively, and again, to Councilwoman Berger's point, there's a lot of questions. There are potential budget implications. There are staffing implications. So we don't want to whimsically put anything out there before the council without full scrutiny and support of the town staff. So as we've been challenged and tasked to put together the master plan, we'd like to challenge the council to consider requesting the town manager and his staff to have a green and complete streets ordinance ready for October 1st, 2022.
Thank you, Ken.
Public hearing.
So two weeks prior to this date?
We are flexible on this date, but sure.
Jamie, can you come up for this one as well? Can you come up to the podium here? Is this request doable for your planning staff?
It gets complicated as we begin to roll out American Rescue Plan programs. So if it was, if you set it as a hard deadline, there may be slippage on something else. I would potentially say first of the year, 2023, may be a little more realistic.
I mean, as we've seen, other communities have already passed these ordinances. How much would you be looking to change from what exists for other communities?
Great, great question. So speaking to that directly through the chair, we have taken the Newport ordinance, and we've customized that for South Kingston to the best of our abilities. We believe, and reviewing what Providence and Central Falls have also done, that we are basically in line with what has been happening locally, as well as a national model for this ordinance. So we are pretty confident that the ordinance is pretty drum-tight. What really is needed at this point is the scrutiny of town staff to make sure that they understand what it means to them and their departments.
Councilman McIntyre, to follow up on Mr. Burke's comment. From my perspective, it's not the language of the ordinance that's the time-consuming aspect of this. It's vetting it with the community and the other boards and commissions that will have to deal with any ordinance that is potentially contemplating and/or adopted over time, and building that support over a few months. And again, planning board has a work session monthly. I know our next two agendas are full, so potentially it'd be a September agenda item for the planning board with an October deadline.
So that's not a hard number, date at all. So I feel like Jamie's been here for two years. He knows the rhythm. He knows what's coming. I don't want to push this off, but I don't want to drop the ball on some other important things. So I feel like Ken's willing to move, the date's just a date to get us to move somewhere. So I think a different date is...
Jamie, you mentioned January 1, 2023?
Yes.
About that date?
That's not a real date.
It's not a real date?
Well, there's no meeting or anything.
I would like to request that it be done by the last date. This current council is sitting. We're the ones entertaining this. It might be the middle of November. I think that's easily achievable.
That could be a goal.
That's the second Monday in November.
If that is your date, we will react to that.
I just feel uncomfortable. I just feel, I totally agree that it's important, but that they have a tiny planning staff of three.
Honestly, a planning staff doesn't even necessarily need to review this. It's a policy goal for the council, and this is our advisory committee on transportation affairs. Affairs. It dovetails, they've drawn from the comprehensive community plan and the transportation element of it. There's a state law, complete streets law. So this is dovetailing with state policy. It also dovetails with DOT policy, which has adopted the context-sensitive design manual as from the International Transportation Engineers Association. I mean, we're not doing something new here that really requires that level of scrutiny, I would say. I mean, by all means, I think the Planning Board can look at it in September, but why would we need to take from September all the way to January to do something which dovetails with current town goals and objectives, statewide goals and objectives?
If I can weigh on Vice President Collins' remarks, I would preclude that if you delay it to January, there is potentially the likelihood that you have a new council coming in who's not going to be familiar with all the work that's been done over the last couple of years, which could cause further delays. Again, having a target date of that October 1st, understanding we will do our best efforts to achieve those dates. Deb, and I understand and appreciate your views on our workload and the fact we have a relatively small department. But again, the ordinances are out there. My only concern is the ability to get support from your local boards and commissions so that when you come to a town council meeting, that someone's not here saying, "No one talked to me. I have comments." If we can do that earlier than later, but I'm sure we'd be prepared to deal with that on the fly at a meeting in October or November. Now, because again, the models are out there. It's really how you want to frame that and how strongly the ordinance reads on the regulatory side.
So where can I read one of these ordinances from other towns? Where can I see the language?
We can, I can send you links. I worked with a prior community that was a gold and then platinum bike community, nationally recognized and award-winning. We have resolutions and adoptions that I've drafted in that community. And again, to Ken's point, Newport has them, Providence has them. We can get you the links in the next week or so.
I'd like to see that. I'd also like to see the master plan circulated among all of the boards and commissions in case anyone wants to weigh in, economic development, sustainability, and any other boards want to have a little input before we adopt it. I think that might be prudent.
Yeah, that's, my biggest concern is the ability for your boards and commissions to weigh in before you adopt an ordinance that may become regulatory.
Ken, go ahead. Again, Councilwoman Kelso, great points. We have been working with the boards and commissions, and we have sent the master plan out to all the boards and commissions. We invited them also to the community work session. So great points all across the board. And fortunately, we've already done that because we're all about planning and making sure we get this done correctly.
Has anyone weighed in, Ken?
We had, goodness, I think we had maybe about 30, 40 comments, minor comments. As you can imagine, in a lot of these forums, we get a lot of advocates, a lot of supporters come out here. We did get challenged by a handful of folks to be mindful of cost impacts, and that's when we had discussions about, well, you could put striping down. If you're putting striping down, maybe if you just reorient to striping, you have a betterment. It doesn't cost anything. So we had not received any negative comments from boards or commissions or members from the public. And I just could add one more thing. We did take time to assess and respond to those community comments, and that got included in the final master plan.
Okay. And I'm going to need a whole lot more time than this half hour, right? So where, how can I read the specifics? Is it all contained in this PowerPoint you gave us, or is there more to this?
It's actually on the town website. So we have a section on the town website for the bicycle pedestrian master plan and what we call the bicycle and pedestrian improvement plan that lists discrete actionable items throughout all the neighborhoods throughout town.
And it is current?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, it's about 7:02, a little bit over. We'll finish about 7:05, but we want to give you some clarity before this meeting ends. We're not leaving on a cliffhanger here to address these first two requests. First one, the master plan. Jamie, can we get that to the planning department and the planning board to look through before we do a resolution on that, preferably sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Great. As to the ordinance, seems like you've committed to, at least prior to, this council's makeup is different. We'd like to stick to that, your best efforts to get that. We understand there's challenges, but we hope you can do that.
We will do our best.
All right, thank you. You have a third request?
Yes, right here. What we're really asking for, this is the softer, this should be easy, I'm hopeful it's easy, I'm sorry, I don't mean to demean any of your comments, but this one is to have the B-Pack continue in advisory capacity for the town staff as well as the community. We feel it's important to have constant community input into the elements that have been prescribed in our master plan. So we have been tasked by town staff to think about what the next version of the B-Pack is. We think it's still the B-Pack, but with a little more emphasis and a little more engagement with town staff and the community. Specifically, you do an annual budgeting process. I believe that is the platform for the community to weigh in well in advance of the council, seeing a finalized budget number on a road or a parking lot or what have you. We would like to serve in that capacity on a moving-forward basis.
All right, that's an easy one. Do we even have to take any action relative to this? Do we have to direct anyone to do anything here? No, right?
Well, without council here, I think when B-Pack was originally formed, there was a very specific goal and objective for them, and that was the creation of the master plan. So I think what Mr. Burke is asking on behalf of the committee is the transition from the roles and responsibilities of creating the plan to an advisory oversight and the implementation of the plan over time as a resource board.
Is that correct?
Expand the charge. Is that what you're looking for?
I think that is what Mr. Burke is asking for.
Correct.
And again, we don't have legal here on whether you would need to change that in the formation of that committee.
All right, maybe that's something we can have as part of Solicitor's report at an upcoming meeting. He could just comment on it to us, sing it into the record now. Hopefully, that gets noted.
Yep.
So, Ken, I asked you if the plan on the website was current, and it's labeled "master plan" July 2020. Is that what I'm looking for?
Forgive me, Councilwoman, we have a separate FTP site, so I may have misdirected you. It is on a town website. I have to get with the IT folks to make sure that it is publicly available.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm reading the most current.
The plan proper is the same. We added the appendix with our public comments to the one that's on the FTP site. So we will update to be sure, just so you know, all the parts of the plan are the same. Just when we had the meeting in April, we added that as an appendix, so it's complete on the record.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's about 7:06. It's going to bring us to the end here. We appreciate your time, very good presentation. We appreciate your work as well, and we're here to help you in any way we can, so we think this is progress.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that said, we're going to move right into some interviews for tonight. We got two interviews for the Library Board of Trustees. We're going to start with the reappointment of Mario Bichetti. Mario, come on up. All right, if you're not here, Mario, we'll go to Lindsay. Lindsay, if you're here, come on up. Oh, there you are. Great.
Sorry, we were just sitting outside and weren't sure we were supposed to come in.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Another wish to reappoint it?
Yes.
If you want to tell us a little bit about your service on the board, some of the challenges, some of the strengths that you've experienced there, and just sort of give us an update here.
All right, absolutely. So I've been on the board for a little bit now. I think, I think we've done some really good work, especially with the director and the staff in terms of COVID and getting through COVID, and really proud of them making all the decisions that they've made along with the board to keep people involved in the library, keep it open as much as possible, keep the patrons who weren't able to get to the library connected and engaged. I think a lot more stuff going on online, which I think is really great for the future. And I think the challenge is to just keep people involved and keep them engaged, which we're kind of working on on a daily basis, I think. And I think one of the biggest things I bring to the board is that just by age, my demographic, I'm the youngest on the board, I have young kids, and I think I bring a lot for those community members and the community members that I kind of know and see and bond with and communicate with in terms of sharing stuff about the library, in terms of bringing what this group of people need and want to see in a library.
Excellent. Any questions for Lindsay? Making it easy for us. You're off the hook. Thank you. All right, we have an interview for the Sustainability Committee. Janine Silverstein? Silver Smith, my apologies. Welcome, Janine. If you just want to tell us about your interest, sort of your background, what you think you could bring to the table on the committee, and if you've been following it all, maybe some of the things you see as challenges or strengths ahead for the committee?
Sure. So I've been a resident of South Kingstown for, going on 13 years now, I think it is, and it's an amazing community in terms of, I think, what people want for sustainability concerns. And so I would like to bring my background in. I'm, you know, have a degree in biology. I was a science teacher. I've devoted my career to environmental education. So I think in terms of people becoming aware of issues and speaking to people about different issues, I feel like I have a big community in this town, and I listen to a lot of different perspectives on it. My feeling about sustainability is that, I think if you had asked me, you know, like 30 years ago, I would have said, like, "You have to save trees, and you have to save animals." And now I understand it much more as being directly related to the health, wellness, economic viability of a town. So I think of it from that perspective. I do see, I've been starting to pay a lot more attention after, you know, kind of pulling away during COVID and all of that, but the, like, composting issue, I think, is a big one in this town. I think we have amazing capacity to have, you know, composting happen at a town level. I'd like to bring my understanding of that to the committee. I would like to just be able to, I guess, bring a different perspective. The committee right now is all male, and so I'm just going to call that out. I think it should be more diverse. We are, you know, we are a diverse community, so I think that should even be more diverse than that. Not sure if I answered your question, sorry, I ran in.
No, you're doing a good job.
So, yeah, I think, you know, I'm, I think with my background, I'm willing to and able to look at different issues, learn about them, understand them, and give my recommendations to the town for, you know, what you might want to do.
Excellent. Any questions for Janine?
Yep. So I just, as much, I'm a composter, so I'm like, yes, but I do it in my own home. Water conservation, to me, is a sustainable issue. Like, I feel like it's hard to say that today when we just walked in in a downpour, but the water bans and people using water, you know, I think John Shock said, "We have potable water coming out, and we're using it to water our lawns." And to me, like, we need to do more education about, can we get rain barrels? Can we explain to people how to use them? So those are the things, like, I, for sustainability, I think, I always think it starts really small, like, those are the things that are going to change and then roll bigger. So are you interested in adding that to the agenda, should you be appointed to the sustainability?
Oh, sure. I mean, I'm willing and open to think about everything. I mean, I brought composting up as one issue because I know that it's current right now, but it is, you know, it, water is an issue, and just because we're in the Northeast, I mean, water is an issue in two different ways, right? We have these intense storms, and then there's runoff, and how do you deal with storm water? And then because of our substrate, there are issues with how water is filtered and is it potable or not, and, you know. So, yeah, water, you know, solar and energy, aggregating our energy sources, renewables. I mean, I'm willing to, I would have some to learn, of course, but I'd be willing to learn whatever issues on the table and hopefully bring different perspective to it.
I just bring it all up because I was really moved by the Bill McCusker, who came and showed us all the NIPS, and he was really eye-opening education, and I think that's how you can change behaviors or change people's policies. So I'm just looking to add people who are going to bring as much, yes, the big picture, but in your own home, in your own lot, what can you do to be more sustainable? That's all. Thank you. What you can say.
Yeah, I agree. I think that what you do in your own home is really important, and there's definitely a lot of, a lot that we can do in this town to raise awareness and educate people. And then there are things that can be done on a town level that can actually help us go farther and help us take collective action on things. And I don't know what, you know, I don't know exactly what those things are yet because I don't want to make decisions before I've heard all of the information, but I do think that there's a time for the town to step in and have policy in place that goes beyond what you do in your home, but it has to, again, it has to impact, you know, benefit the health of everyone in this community. It has to be economically viable, and actually, not just viable, but make a positive impact on our bottom line, and so that's how I approach all those things.
Thank you, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Janine. Appreciate your time, appreciate your interest, and you should find out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If Mario is here right now, looking to be interviewed for the Library Board of Trustees, now's the time. Okay, all right. We're going to move on to the town, uh, sorry, we're going to move on to the agenda. Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. If we go to licenses, you'll see there's two consent agendas. Go right to Communications. On 7A, a resolution adopting Barrington Town Council in support of legislation, restoring funding for state aid to libraries to the full 25%. This, I'll just give you a little background on that. This might be a moot issue since the House just tonight approved the full 25% reimbursement. Laurel Clark is here, also our Director of the Libraries. The figure in, the state historically gave 25% of whatever was budgeted for the libraries in state aid. It was reduced in '09 to 22.38%. So by the House passing that tonight, and hopefully the Senate passes it shortly after, it would increase our state aid from, from about $217,400 with an additional $27,400 coming from the state of Rhode Island. So we're hopeful that this does get through the Senate. I see no reason why it wouldn't at this point. So that's good news. That'd be additional funds coming to the, to the libraries, which is over what they budgeted for the year.
Hasn't the budget been passed?
Yes, it has.
You keep saying tonight.
Well, the House of Representatives, Laurel, it was passed tonight, correct?
It was passed tonight.
Yeah, the budget's finalized. The governor signed it tonight.
Yeah, so it must have not been tonight then, so that's a good point. Sorry. But it was at the last minute that they did it. So the budget was signed today at 12:30. Yes, you're correct.
So, just to clarify, our libraries will get a little bit more money from the state. That's the bottom line.
That's correct. It's an additional $27,400 that'll be coming from the state of Rhode Island.
Awesome.
As of what is in the budget.
Wonderful.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Right, it's a moot point.
It is a moot point, yes.
It's already done.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
But we, we should just explain that in the regular meetings so that people know because that's a really good thing, and that for our community, they will be very happy. So I don't want to just gloss through it and...
E through G are, are consent agenda items. If you look at F, though, even though it is consent agenda, you know, the question of a homestead tax exemption comes up quite often in the town discussions, and there are three areas that I have directed the staff and myself to look at, three very important areas in the next several months. One is going to be a municipal court. The second is a discussion about a rental registration in town, and the third would be the homestead exemption. So that is, that is on our radar. Just want to bring that to your attention. H, consent agenda again. I'll note in the, in the town manager's report, there'll be two items I'll be bringing up. One will be... One will be an introduction of our new police chief, who was sworn in this morning at 10:00 AM. He's here tonight, we'll introduce him at the meeting. And the second is, there was a mass gathering application that was received by the town on June 18th. It's a little unusual, we have not had one of this magnitude before, and I will go over the particulars of it at the meeting or now, if you'd like, but it's, it's by Brewer's Whaling, Whalers Brewing Company, and they, Mr. Ken Burke would be the coordinator for that. So we are, we are in the administrative review process of that. Obviously, there's a big component of public safety that needs to be reviewed. It should be on the agenda, though, for your consideration on July 11th at that meeting. Go right to do our new business. A and B, our solicitor would be able to explain that, if you have any questions on that now. C, D, E. F. G, H. Our, Mr. John Shock, Director of Public Services, is here. If you have any questions on those, I would ask him to answer those. I is a, a bid for uniforms for the police department, pretty standard procedure on that. Went to the low bidder. J is consent. K, this was a little confusing to me when I first saw it on the agenda, so I want to clarify, because I know we've been talking about an aggregation regard to the residents here in town, but this is for the municipal buildings only, this, this agenda item. This is something we enter into with the, into local trust every year, and there's many towns within the state that also are in this aggregation for electrical purchasing, and it's just for the municipal buildings. Clarify on that.
Just with the League of Cities and Towns.
League of Cities and Towns. Sorry.
Can I ask that that'll be continued?
Yes. L is, is what the solicitor and I were just discussing. We're going to continue this to the July 11th meeting. They were brought to my attention today as a few items that we need to change in there.
And in addition to that, all the other pilot agreements that the town has with other entities will also be on the July 11th agenda, so we'll be able to handle them all together.
This is a, goes back over 10 years, the, the abatement of uncollectible tangible personal property taxes of 2011, which totaled about $11,117, motor vehicle taxes, $22,892, combined taxes, $34,009. Every, every opportunity to collect those has been unsuccessful at this point for the last 10 years.
I'm sorry, I don't remember this coming up before, just a question. What does that mean? Are we just writing that off as bad debt and...
Yes, that's correct. This went to a collection agency. It went, every attempt was made by the town to collect these taxes. Mike, do you have anything further on that?
I was just going to explain that there's a 10-year statute of limitations on trying to collect bad debt, and that's why this references 2011. We've been through that 10 years, so efforts to collect other bad debt that is younger than 10 years is ongoing. And the fact that soon the motor vehicle tax won't be an issue anymore, and that's one of the biggest areas that municipalities have had trouble collecting. People move, and unlike liens on real estate, there's no, there are no such liens on vehicles,
N, these are really the annual tax collection policies that you'll see in the exhibit that's attached, same as in previous years, authorizing dates and so forth. O, authorizing a fund transfer of $238,900 for OPEB payments. The, in speaking with the, the interim finance director, we still are on track for a surplus to be no larger than $270,000, approximately $272,000 at this point. The $238 is not coming from that $272. The $238 was, was budgeted by her right from the beginning, so really, the surplus would be the $272 plus the $238, but the $238 is something we committed to paying from right from the beginning. E, Town Clerk successfully negotiated a, a contract that the price per unit of advertising went from $2 to $5. Ms. Flynn, in her prudent financial conservatism, got it down to $2.50 per unit, which is, which is, we're thankful for that. Q, consent agenda. And that's it.
Right, thank you, Jim.
Can we just go back to...
Any questions for the manager right now on the agenda?
Yeah, just real quickly, we, we didn't go over 12B, proposed amendments to the Town Council Rules of Conduct about what communications will appear on the agenda. I was just wondering where that's coming from.
So, because it's an amendment to your rules of conduct, that is something you can discuss and vote on this evening. It's not like a notice of hearing or anything like that. And that's on there because there have been a number of inquiries to the Town Hall and to my office as to how is it decided what gets on the agenda in terms of communications? And I assure you, every municipality has the same issue. You could have hundreds of emails come in, and the question is, well, which ones make it to the agenda? And the language that's proposed will make it clear that if it requires Town Council action of some kind, it'll go on the agenda. Something comes in to the Town Council, you will always get copies of it. You will see them. It just doesn't mean that you're going to be addressing them on the agenda. So we can discuss it more and get into it a little bit, but it's long past time to have a policy in place, because as I've been explaining to individuals who contacted me, I basically have to say it's a, a policy, it's a pass down. It'd be really good, if it's not this specific language, we can discuss amendments, but we need something.
Well, yeah, I, this is actually returning to the policy as it existed perhaps two or three years ago, I would say. So I was just wondering how.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Mario, if you are here, come on up. All right, we know that you are here wishing to be reappointed to the Library Board of Trustees, so just tell us a little bit about yourself, your experience on the board, some of the challenges, some of the strengths the board has had, and just give us an overall update.
So I've, used to live in Rhode Island 30 years ago to about 20 years ago, and then I went back, and now I've been back for about 10 years, so pretty long time Rhode Island resident, I guess. Maybe not as long as a lot of people here. And when my mother died, she was very big in the library in her town, and I kind of have decided to, to do that myself. That's why I got involved in the first place. So I think I've been on the board, what, Laurel, about four years? How long have you been there, Laurel?
Mario, this is sort of with us.
Oh, I'm sorry. So it's been about four years that I've been on the board, and I think, you know, the thing that I, I worry about, I'll start with that, with the library, is everything's going online, you know? The library's got to be a center of public. It isn't just a place to pick up books. It's got to be more than that. And I think we've been working hard on that, and Laurel is, is really, one of the successes is she's fairly new in the library, and she really is able to run that place very well, and people there like her and they work hard, you know? So I think that those are the, the challenge for the library is to become more relevant to the community is really the challenge.
All right, all right, thank you. Any questions for Mario? Well, I'm a big advocate for libraries. I spend a lot of time in them, so I appreciate your advocacy for them as well, but thank you for your consideration, thank you for your service, and you should find out tonight.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to Town Hall. It is Monday, June 27, about 7:30 PM. This is a regularly scheduled Town Council meeting. First of all, business is the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement statement, which I will read. The town of South Kingstown pays homage to the indigenous people and land on which the town is now located, but this acknowledgement serves as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with the arrogance of a tribe whose land and water we benefit from today. Next, we have the roll call. If you would, Susan.
Council President McEntee.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Next, we have item four, approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Motion to approve item 4A.
Second.
Just 4A?
We do B as well.
Sorry, and B.
And B.
4A and B.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. It's going to bring us to item five, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve item five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. It's going to bring us to Communications, item 7A, which is a resolution adopted by the Barrington Town Council in support of legislation restoring funding for state aid to libraries to the full 25%.
I'll make a motion to place item seven on file. I'll just remark that we're grateful that we can put this on file and not take any action on it because it's been done. So thank you to the legislature and the governor signing the budget. This funding has been restored.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just wanted to explain to the community that with the full funding to the library, we'll realize about an additional $27,000 in aid, and we're grateful for that, and we know that the library staff will put that to good use for our community. So I just wanted everyone to know, we had a little windfall.
Always great to see more support for our local libraries, for sure. All right, any more discussion on this one? Anyone opposed? All right, the motion passes. It's going to bring us to item eight, comments from interested citizens. Already, how about that? But we're going to limit you to five minutes. We just ask that you first identify yourself, and first come, first served.
Bob Trager, Succotash Road. I ask my coils, myself, every other Monday, or the, second and fourth Monday, why am I doing this? What am I going over there for? Well, this is one of the reasons, I'll admit, I like to get up and talk for a couple of minutes, but the other reason is, as I've said it many times, that I think people from the community should, once in a while, stop by and see what you guys do. And this, this is one of those easy nights, it looks like, when I read through the agenda, I, geez, he's going to get, he's going to get to this. But that isn't the only reason I'm here. I, I hope you realize that. And it's, it's mainly due to my own personal disabilities, that I, I can't really take much action. I'm not a, I'm not on the computer 50 hours a day. I don't even touch a computer. I barely touch my phone. So this is a place, it's a public place, and I, that's why I come over. And today, I, I fished for a little while, believe it or not, on a day that nobody was out. We caught a couple, but it was, the conditions weren't good. I came in and did a little yard work before it started to rain hard, watched a little tennis, and then I watched an hour of, of a Supreme Court justices, justice being interviewed, which I, that's the kind of thing I try to gravitate to, that type of dialogue where somebody that's really, has done a lot, Stephen Breyer. It was before the, the decision, I believe, has been made by the court that only solidifies, which I'd like to not solidify, my feelings about what's going on in the country. And like I say, this is the only place for me, if there's another place, I haven't found it. I, I could try to write, try to get something in the paper or something, but anyway, he gave an unbelievable, well, it wasn't a talk, it was question and answers between the hosts, but he gave some very interesting perceptions of the situation that we're in in the country, because we are surviving democracy to some extent. It's an experiment. It's a few hundred years old, and it's the only one like it in the world. And I always felt that when I come here, this is a little bit of a positive part of it. It isn't like that everywhere, not when they're electing people to office that are willing to overturn an election, and that's going on in quite a few states right now. I watch the PBS NewsHour every night, I watch BBC, if possible, and I watch C-SPAN when I'm, if there's something on that, if, that it's a panel discussion or something on, a topic that's of interest. Anyway, that's why I'm here, and I'm glad you guys are going to get home early tonight because you deserve it. When you hit a 11 o'clock and 10 o'clock, and I've watched you, I try to stay for the whole show, but I'm not going to do it tonight. But it's, it's a show that needs to happen. It's one that's important for our country, and, and it's important that people take an interest in everything that's going on right now, because what, there's so many negatives right now. I don't like to be negative. I like to, maybe I'll... I'd like to, maybe I'll search, I'll search, search the news this coming week and then two weeks, and see if I can come up with a couple of real positive things that I'm hearing from our, our government, you know? You notice how, I, I want to get, I was just going to stop, but I'll just say one more thing. If you haven't noticed that, I'm sure you have, you're all intelligent people, that if something's on, now, road, roadway, that's taken over the news now. You know, every single morning, if I watch Washington Journal for a half an hour, an hour, people call in from all over the country. That's, that's the topic. That's going to be the topic for a while. It should be the topic. It should be a topic, but there are all the other topics that get drowneded out, like voting rights, and a major one, that's a major one, and yet, when, they're not doing it. They, have they passed it? Has the president signed the, the document for the little tiny bits and pieces they did on the gun control? And have they, has it been signed yet? Does anybody know? Yeah, I didn't even hear about it today on the news, anybody talking about it. You get what I'm saying? And then I'm going to say right after that, have a good night. You know, it's, it's hard, it's hard. It's hard for me, I had an easier week because I decided to fish a lot more than I normally do, so when I get out there, you can't, you've got to be paying attention to the tip of the rod, you know? You can't be thinking about all this stuff. But, that's, that's the same way with tennis, and maybe, I don't play golf that much anymore, but that, you know, those are the kinds of things that can get your head out of it, but when you, I do watch a lot of other stuff, and my head is telling me that the human race, thank God America exists, but we're, we're, we're in trouble here. We're in big trouble. So, keep up what you guys do, because you're people that think, and I think you're, the two words that are, that I judge most everything by, exclusion and inclusion. The other one is the quality of caring, but whatever I'm listening to anybody speak about anything, I want to, who are they including and who are they excluding? And that's how I judge the validity of-
Bob, everything you're saying, you are going a little bit over.
I'm done, I'm done.
All right, thank you.
I'll see you guys. I'm going to go now. I, you know that I'm not doing this because I'm not interested in you. I'm going to leave tonight. I'm going to, because I know you've got a quick agenda. I want you to get out.
All right, thank you, Bob. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Come on up. All right, seeing none, anyone from the, Abel, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Bob as he walks away, just for coming habitually and, and raising some of the bigger issues that we don't often really address here at the council And just calls to mind, you know, I, I think this past week, we, we celebrated pride here locally. I thought that was a wonderful event down Main Street and Sagatucket Park and River, River Fire, no, yes, River Fire, not Water Fire. And I, you know, that in juxtaposition to really some of the decisions that we've seen coming out of the Supreme Court, and a call by one Supreme Court Justice to really review the decision that, that allowed marriage equality. It's stark, I, I think things are at a dangerous place in our country. And so, it's important, I think, again, what Bob said, is like, people being interested in public service. This is the first day for filing to be-
-people watching, interested in politics and in policy will take the opportunity to jump in with both feet, seek out those nomination papers, get on the ballot and, and try and change the world as they see fit. That's an important part of why we're here, and of course, the, the reason why we're here, and I hope other people pursue that.
Thank you, Abel. Any other thoughts?
So, I, I really appreciate that you said that, Abel, because earlier, the week before, we had talks about, well, that anyone can come to the microphone and really hear, you invite them and they get their five minutes, and that doesn't happen in other communities either, so, thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any other thoughts? All right, that's going to move us on to Town Manager's Report. Jim?
Thank you, Council President. There have been four high-level staff positions that have been filled in the past couple of months, and as each one is filled, I'll bring them up to the Town Council and introduce them, tell you their qualifications, and you can meet them in person. First one tonight, that, the first hire started today, Chief Matthew Moynihan. Matt, if you could step up to the microphone. I'll say a few words about Chief Moynihan, and then I'll turn over to him to introduce himself to the council. So, there were 15 applicants for a police chief, five of which got interviews, and they were all great applicants. I'll tell you a little bit about Chief Moynihan. He's a, he's been a resident of South Kingston since 1999. He's married to his, his lovely wife, who was here this morning with his two children, Connor and Aiden, or his boys. I've personally known Matt for 25 years. I was an instructor at his academy in 1997, and I will attest to his character. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, a master's degree in cybercrime, and he's a graduate of the FBI Academy. Up until a couple of days ago, he was the Block Island Police Chief, where he was there for over a year. He retired from the state police just over a year ago, became the Block Island Police Chief, totally restructured that, that agency, and we're proud to have him. I'll tell you about his, all right, state police career. He was the officer in charge of the Major Crimes Unit, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Unit, the FBI Organized Crime Unit, and the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force. He was a captain in charge of Uniform Bureau in charge of 175 state troopers. One of his proudest achievements that, that really put him to the top of the list was, he created the Hope Initiative. And the Hope Initiative is this nation's only law enforcement-led outreach program for people who have an opioid addiction. It was not something that was widely popular in the law enforcement community, but Matt took the bull by the horns and won us all over that this is the way to go. We could not arrest our way out of this terrible addiction that has plagued our country. So, the, the Hope Initiative is, is a resource center that is law enforcement-led, that people who have been stricken with this addiction can find the resources they need. This is something he really believes in. He was published in Police Chief Magazine just over a year ago, as Rhode Island is one of the nation's leaders in this epidemic, but also, he practices what he preaches. Over the last few weeks, Block Island's had three overdoses due to opioids, and they all survived, and Matt got them the, got them the help they needed, the resources, and they're on the road to recovery. So, that, that right there showed me he had a different, different angle to being a great police chief, something that showed compassion for the residents. I, I truly, Matt's a true leader, and he's a person of great character. I'm 100% confident. It will serve our residents with fairness, compassion, integrity, and transparency. I truly feel there's nothing that this town could ever face that Chief Moynihan would not be able to handle. Just to clarify how the role would change, so, I am the Town Manager and the Director of Public Safety in a time of emergency by the Charter. There also is a Chief of Police who would also act as the Emergency Manager Director, so that would fall under the Director of Public Safety, whether it's a natural disaster or something much more serious. So, he will be taking on both roles as the Chief of Police and the Emergency Management Director. So, I'm proud to introduce Chief Moynihan to the council.
Hi, good evening, Council President and members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Today was a great first day. I met with my command staff earlier this morning, introduced myself, and, and then attended the swearing-in, and then met the officers on the second shift, and I'll go in this evening and, and attend third shift roll call, and then again, follow up tomorrow morning. And really, you know, my message to the members of the department is, is simple, it's, is basically, our work must always be centered around gaining and, and keeping the public's trust. And, and there are three core values that I plan to use to direct our energies, and those being community engagement, accountability, and professionalism. And community engagement means that we're visible, we're active, and, and we're relevant to the people that we serve in this community. Accountability allows us to always be able to show that we act in the best interests of our community, and that we serve, that we are receptive to the needs, and we learn from the public's comments and feedback that we receive. And, and most importantly, professionalism. And professionalism, professionalism means that we're always, seek to improve ourselves, and so that we can recruit and retain the best officers. My goal is to make this department, it's a great department, and my goal is really to improve and, and make it one of the leading agencies in this, in the state. I want it to be a department that officers aspire to, to submit applications to, and that they stay on board. I'm going to spend the next several weeks, meeting with the officers, as I said, attending the roll calls, you know, learning and listening from them, and basically seeing what, you know, our strengths and weaknesses are, and where we may improve to better ourselves within the department. I know I'm, I'm fortunate to join a department that's been well-managed and disciplined over the years, but improvement is always possible, and we can make even the best departments even better. I want to close by thanking you all for the opportunity to serve as South Kingston's Police Chief. I'm very excited for the opportunity. As Jim stated, I raised my family here, my wife and I built a house right off of South Road, and we've lived here for the past 27 years. Very excited for the opportunity, and, and thank you for the opportunity.
Chief, just want to cordially say, welcome, congratulations. Jim has been talking very highly about you, bragging about you ever since he made this election, so we feel fortunate, you know, considering his background, he knows best who to hire for this role, and we're excited for you. We know you'll do well, we know you'll do well, and, and it's welcome, and we look forward to seeing it at the meetings going forward, so.
Great, thank you. Good.
On the Town Manager's Report, Council President, there's, there's one area, one discussion I'd like to bring up, to bring to your attention, because we'll be on the agenda on July 11th, and I'd like to prep you with what the staff is working on and what the ask will be. So, there was, on June 18th, 2022, an application came in for a mass gathering to the Town Clerk's Office. It was at the request of the Whalers Brewing Company, with Mr. Ken Burke being the event coordinator. The event would be scheduled on, was listed as scheduled on August 20th, 2022, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM, with a rain date of August 21st. With a mass gathering application that requires a 90-day advance notice prior to the event, they fell within that time, it was 60 days, so that's why it's not on the agenda tonight. We will, we will, we have much to do administratively to study this, to see if it's feasible. What, what it will be is an event of up to 3,000 people with 1,200 vehicles, a 40-by-60 tent, alcohol will be served, there will be fireworks for 15 minutes from 10:30 to 10:45 on either the 20th or the 21st, depending on if there's rain. There'll be food trucks, and there will be some paid tickets. A lot of the business owners and so forth will be given complimentary tickets by Whalers to attend this event, with other tickets being given out or sold. So, right now, it's in the administrative process that we are studying it, and there are four divisions, four departments here that are actively involved in it. Obviously, me as the Town Manager, but also, police, EMS, union fire, and the building inspector are actively involved in vetting this to come up with a plan and present it to the council.
Thank you, Jim. We should sort of discuss a little bit our take. I think it looks like a good opportunity for tourism, collaboration amongst local business, sort of marketing, things of that nature, as long as there's no public safety concerns. And obviously, Jim, you'll be addressing those, but any thoughts from the other members?
I, I think it sounds like an interesting event. Do we know what it, it's for specifically, or is it?
It, it's a, it's an economic development-type event to promote their brewing company, and they, they came to us with a, with a plan that we'll be working closely with them on, once again, public safety will be the utmost importance, since obviously, there'll be a larger gathering of people here, but we, we don't have all the facts on it yet, and, and what, what exactly that plan will entail, but I, I'll have that for you within a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you.
So, my question, I guess, is about the people that live around there. Like, is there enough notice? I mean, I'm thinking about the Fourth of July, Old Mountain Field, everybody knows what that's going to be like, and I can really imagine on a, whatever, Saturday in the summer, the traffic and being safe, and then people might not want that, and how does the public know that even, that, to say, this is something we wouldn't want, or, because it's not a nonprofit event, it's a for-profit event, right?
Yes. So, that, that is one of the major concerns. Public safety is the number-one concern. Shut down, yes or no? Parking will be a big one. Where are we going to park, you know, whether it's a shuttle service or so forth? But, once again, we'll have the entire plan rolled out with, with that in mind for sure, to minimize the impact on the residents that live in this area.
Mike, quick question before we go further. Do we have to add this as an agenda item to this extended discussion right now, or no?
No, because it's already on here.
I just worry that that area is a weird, you know, you're coming down 108 by the library, swing around, and that, traffic-wise, and then up to 3,000 people, how are you going to know that you got to 3,001?
Well, that, once again, that's one of the concerns. Are we going to have a roped-off area? Is it going to be, you know, obviously, we don't want 10,000 people showing up to this event. But that's why I thought it was prudent to bring it to the council's attention tonight, because I'm sure, you know, this word we're getting around, they want to promote it, so if, if there are concerned parties, they could come to the meeting and address it at that time.
Right, but, but it'll only be on the agenda July-
11th.
Right, which is Monday, so, but it only gets posted. If you're not watching this meeting, you don't know until July 8th, or whatever that Thursday is, right? So, you only have 48 hours to get up to speed of what the plan is and what it's not going to be, or what it is going to be.
Yeah, I think the word of mouth is already out there, that this event's being planned, but I do agree with you, that, you know, this, these are the things that we're all looking at as we do the administrative review. If, if, if it's, your pleasure is to continue it after the 11th, that's, that's another consideration, but, you know, the window of opportunity is pretty close at that point.
Are, are, are they willing to consider a different date, just so that we can have more planning time? I mean-
That, that has not been proposed to them yet. If we determine that it's too close to the time, and we cannot get all the answers we need, that, that could come up in the discussion.
So, Jim, we've had similar, similar events, like the Peasdale Block Party, the Wakefield Village Association events, Behind Phils, things like that. This is obviously in a different location, but this, to me, seems like 3,000 people is something we have dealt with in the past at different events, sort of down the road, or a mile down the road. So, I think this is something, obviously, we haven't looked into it, and I trust you and your staff to look into it and get back to us on it, but something I have an appetite for, and I think hopefully, we vet it, consider it, and we see what you come back with at the next meeting.
Sure, that, that is one of the things we brought up at the initial meeting that we had. There are many similarities to other events that are being held here, and also Narragansett, you know, with the road race and so forth, but this one's a little different. The, you know, like, even when we have fireworks at Old Mountain Field, a lot of families attend that, this, I don't think would be as many families. I don't, I don't foresee younger children attending this. This would be mostly, I would think, all adults.
Yep.
So, those are considerations we are considering. That's why it's not on the, the agenda tonight. They, they did request it went on tonight, but this is going to take at least two weeks of careful study and planning before we could have all the facts.
Got it. Any other questions for Jim? All right. Does that conclude the manager's report?
Yes, it does, sir.
Got it, thank you, Jim.
During the work session, you talked a little bit about Marjorie Burston's letter and the homestead exemption. We, did you want to?
The three things on your docket there, Jim?
Yes, the, the three things I spoke about at the work session, so I defer to the solicitors. So, I, at the work session, Mike, I brought up the three areas that we're studying with the staff, our, our municipal court, rental registration, discussion on that, and the homestead exemption. Would I be allowed to discuss any of those?
It's your manager's report, you may.
So, would you like to discuss the homestead exemption? Is that what you-
Sure, because what if Marjorie's at home and wondering?
I, that has become quite the topic of discussion because of the the assessments that we've had, you know, how they went up substantially in value. So a homestead exemption is something I am familiar with. I was in Narragansett as the town manager when that was enacted and implemented. We, I was the town manager that implemented that plan. The difference there is, so that town had something a little different than us. There were about 9,000 properties, one-third were owned or occupied. And this, one-third were strict rentals and one-third were vacation homes. This town has a different makeup. So that's one of the considerations we have to, we have to think about. But the staff, my staff and myself, will be researching homestead exemption with the towns and cities that have them to see the benefits and detriments that they that the town has. One thing I did learn in Narragansett, the more we, more people we include, the more it waters down the percent that each resident will will get as a benefit. I also learned that, you know, the tax role is the tax role, that that number's there. So if the homestead exemption is enacted, that the burden of to some other taxpayers will be shifted of where that additional funds will come from. But that's, that's something we will have a comprehensive report and different options at some point to discuss with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim. All right, that's going to move us to the solicitor's report. Mike?
So you're all familiar, obviously, with the Rhode Island Cannabis Act that was signed into law by the governor at the end of May. There are a couple of things I'd like you to consider for this evening and act on. So this is an opt-out act in terms of whether or not recreational retail sales will take place in the town. But it's important, I think everyone knows that part. It's important to know it also includes cultivation, manufacture, lab testing, and you can't divide those up. It all comes as one package. So since it's an opt-out, what it means is that automatically, in every city and town in the state, all four of those activities will be allowed. The legislature in creating the act did give municipalities the opportunity to send this to referendum and ask the voters whether or not they want this or not. So you, as a town council, have the opportunity, if you want to, to send this to referendum on November 8th for the voters to vote it up and down. If you don't, it will be allowed. That's part one. Part two is that no matter what, highly recommend that what you do is send this to the planning board, because we should amend our zoning ordinance to restrict the areas where these activities can take place. Because again, it's not just selling it, it's manufacturing it. And manufacturing cannabis can have certain odors and other things associated with it. So obviously, you want it in certain districts, so to speak. So regardless of whether you send it to a referendum, I would like you, or I'm recommending that you send it to the planning board so we begin the process. Because what we want to do is if there are going to be zoning amendments, we want those in place before the activity begins, obviously, so we're all set for it. So those are the two points I wanted to make, and it's really up to you to decide where you want to go. I'll answer whatever questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Mike. Anyone have any questions for Mike?
What if we don't send it to referendum?
If you don't send it to referendum, then it will be allowed in town, subject to whatever zoning amendments you adopt between now and the fall. And by the way, several communities are not sending it to referendum, some are. So it's really individual, based upon the community. Some communities like the idea that it's in their town, they will collect, you know, there's a 3% excise tax, it'll be a revenue generator. And plus, the feeling is it'll, someone will just go to town right next to them to get it if they can't get it in their own town. And as long as we properly zone for it, it won't be a problem. Other communities, they tend, I shouldn't say tend, there's some communities very rural in nature, they'd really just rather not have it. But it's still going to be up to their electors to decide it one way or another, because the councils can't make that decision. So it's just, needless to say, South Kingston is one of the communities that allows medicinal marijuana at the present time, so this would add recreational.
So Mike, we already are a host community for a medical compassion center, is that correct?
Yes, you are.
So regardless of whatever action or inaction we take relative to referendum or not, that will be there.
Oh, absolutely. This only applies to recreational cannabis, yes.
And this would allow them to convert into dual medical and recreational?
Could, if they get the proper state licensing and if it's complies with our zoning. I I mean, the recommendation's probably going to be to allow recreational where medicinal is presently allowed, but there might be some changes tweaking, shall we say, to that.
So the statute sort of contemplates that if the leadership of the town, the council, were against it, they would send it to referendum. So?
Correct.
But is?
It's not so much that you're against it, there's some councils just feel let the people decide, so to speak.
Yeah.
You you are under no obligation to send it to referendum.
I think that's something we should discuss now.
I I agree, you need to discuss what you want to do.
What is the deadline for getting it on the ballot?
Is it early August or?
August 10th, the question asked, certified to the Secretary of State's office.
Would we expect the planning board decisions prior to that?
The, um, the zoning, the zoning's not linked, the zoning does not have to be in place by August. So we've got plenty of time for this.
By November 8th, though, right?
Oh, by, yes. So if in fact you send it to referendum, for instance, and the people said no, then the zoning would just be null and void. If they said yes, it'll kick right in.
Right, but I guess my point is, I wouldn't want to send it to referendum without all of the facts in place to say to the residents, this is where it will be allowed.
Yeah, that's going to be tight. I, right, it's already, you know, the end of June, by the time it gets to planning and they have to get it on their agenda, I, it's very doubtful to me that planning's going to be able to have an opinion to you in time for the referendum question on August 10th.
So if it doesn't go to referendum and we, as a council, don't take any action?
Right.
It is allowed?
That is correct. And you basically have between now and, I mean, you could decide that referendum issue not tonight, although it's on the agenda tonight. We, you still have at least two more meetings, right? The two July meetings? We still have two meetings in July, which would permit you, if you wanted, to put it on the referendum in time for the August 10th deadline, so to speak.
And if it gets defeated at a referendum, not allowable?
Right.
How soon could that issue be taken up again?
Um, you know, that's a good question. I I think once it's defeated, there's no question in my mind that it would have to go back to the voters at another election later. The legislation doesn't address that, let's put it that way.
Okay.
It does address that if you are going to have a vote, it has to be the general election of 2022. The legislation doesn't address your question. What happens if they defeat it? Can we bring it back at some future point?
Right.
And you know, clearly, these activities aren't going to take place in all 39 cities and towns. So my guess is, once they're established somewhere, you know, chances of someone deciding to pick up stakes and go somewhere else, you know?
And if this council allows it and the next council does not wish to keep that in play, what happens?
It's too late, then, because it's an opt-out and the legislature says the opt-out has to happen by the voters by November 8th of this year.
Right, but if this council, this council cannot opt out?
No.
Only the voters?
Only the voters, yes. Only the voters can opt out.
But we could opt in?
You could, well, the way the legislation's written is everyone is automatically opted in.
Okay.
And then due to some lobbying, they added the provision that would allow an opt-out, but they didn't leave that to councils, they said it's got to go to a referendum.
So if we do nothing, if we take no action, it is allowable?
Correct.
And we'll wait for the planning board to say where it is allowed, then we would adopt that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And Mike, this allows, no action would allow automatic conversion of the existing medical compassion center, assuming they get the licenses?
No, it won't be, well, yeah, they'd have to get a license and I'm not sure.
And that location is already set in stone, is that correct as well?
The locations for the medicinal, the compassion centers are already chosen. Obviously, you have one. The licensing for recreational use is something totally different, and you shouldn't automatically assume that just because a facility has a medicinal license that they're going to get a recreational license. Now, it may very well happen, it seems to make sense, but there's no guarantee that would happen. And and it's very possible that there would be recreational centers opened elsewhere in town, not associated with the medicinal centers, again, depending on where zoning would allow it.
I mean, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I think if we put it to the voters, I think they would approve this question with a substantial majority. So I'm happy to go either course.
If we, if it's allowed, how many retail establishments could there be in town? One or?
No, it could be more than one. There's, there's no limit either way, Deb. But I believe, again, from what I'm hearing, the background noise about how this is working is they want to spread it out throughout the state. So I, because especially those communities that want it, they, they want it for the reasons on the merits, meaning they would like it available, but they also want it for the income stream.
So I look at this like liquor licenses.
Separate it out.
So I feel about this the same way I do about liquor stores, right? And that's based on population, how many liquor store licenses, true? Is that still true? Used to be about 4,000 or 5,000 people in population?
Class A.
You could add a liquor, a class A, right?
Class A liquor license.
But this is not based like that.
It is not, no, it is not. I I mean, the other thing you can do, let me just add to the conversation, that if it is allowed, whether by you or in a referendum, you still can restrict where marijuana is smoked, meaning you can prevent it from happening in public places, the beaches, the athletic fields.
Right, what should we do with alcohol and, you know, now, you know, it's where it's allowed, where consumption is allowed?
Correct, you are allowed to do that with cannabis, yes.
And also, would we, to your point of controlling the number of operations, I guess, we could, could we kind of restrict that as, like via zoning, like?
Yeah, like you want to say no more than five licenses or something to that effect?
Right.
Yeah, we we could certainly look at that.
Okay.
Mike, I believe the language right now doesn't allow you to restrict it any further than any language within the state. So if the state doesn't restrict the number, the town cannot put a number on it. But you can develop regulations and establish where they can be in town.
Right, I think that's more what I mean.
And what proximity they can be to schools, churches, and other public buildings.
500, it's 500 feet from schools and churches, things like that. And it does make clear that you cannot, it's a package, meaning you can't separate out retail licenses from manufacturing, from cultivation, from lab testing, et cetera. It's all, it's all or nothing, basically.
So when you say cultivation, I know what it means, growing. But in my head, I see like a location for a retail location could be commercial highway, commercial whatever. And then, but the growing would have to be somewhere else, right? You're not going to grow on Old Tower Hill Road. So I don't know anything about growing, like how big or how small you need for a space. But I'm just saying, like, they seem to be in conflict. I imagine fields, maybe I'm imagining the wrong, see? Pollyanna here, not my thing. I don't do that, so I just don't understand, like.
I believe the cultivation is indoors.
Oh, I don't know anything. I'm sorry. So it doesn't really matter, I guess, then? I just was trying to figure out, well, what's in West Kingston? Isn't there a compassion growing place in West Kingston?
I believe it's indoors.
It's indoors.
You can't grow year-round here outside, so do it inside, I think.
Pollyanna.
So I think at least one of the two requests is a no-brainer. The directing the planning board in conjunction with the town solicitor's office to draft zoning ordinance relative to this. That should be an easy one. Want to take that motion now?
I'm moved.
All right.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on that? Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Now we've got to take up whether to do the referendum. I see, I feel a little similar to Abel Collins. I think this has a lot of benefits it could bring to the community. I think it could bring a lot of tourism, I think it could bring a lot of, a lot of activity, suffer its way into other small businesses, allow them to grow further, and also bring that 3% excise tax on all revenues generated. But obviously, the best way to get the pulse of the community would be put this to referendum. I don't want that to be an indication that we're against it, but it just, it does allow us to get a real feel for how they feel. So I could really go any way with this.
Yeah, I I do think if it goes to referendum, it's going to be overwhelmingly approved. But if people want to have a say, then let them have a say.
I'm in favor of the referendum, I think. I think I'd like to see the, I mean, I I agree with you. I think it will be overwhelmingly approved, and I'd like that out there, I think.
It's, it's.
I'd like that vote out there.
It's like what Bob said. Bob Traeger was here talking about public participation. It's just one opportunity that the community doesn't have a lot of opportunities to weigh in. It's good to hear from them.
Yeah, if we have an opportunity to hear their voices, we we should take it, like.
And Mike, going to referendum wouldn't delay the process, would it? Everything would align at the same time anyway.
If it goes, if it passes, it's the same as it was going to go anyway, and if it doesn't pass?
Like if we didn't send it to resolution and made the decision by the August date that you said?
August 10th, right?
What's that?
August 10th.
Does that mean the process would be expedited if we took no action as opposed to sending it to referendum, or it would align the same timeline?
December, right?
Yeah, I I don't think it's going to make any difference either way.
Okay, all right.
We'll make a motion, a resolution authorizing a referendum on cannabis licenses.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. That's going to bring us to 11 appointments.
I make a resolution appointing Lindsay Madam to the Library Board of Trustees.
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes.
Make a motion to appoint Janine Silversmith to the Sustainability Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes.
And I would make a motion, a resolution to appoint Mario, and I can't remember his last name off the top of my head. Mario.
It's either Brissette or Bruketti.
Mario Bruketti to the Library Board of Trustees, sorry.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes.
We do have a 300th anniversary application as well, so I'd make that resolution to appoint Mark Phillips to the 300th Anniversary Committee.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes.
I have a question. Exactly. So we got a recent, we got a Friday application from Elizabeth Karp, and I just want to make sure that we could schedule her for July 11th if possible, so that we could make a decision quickly. She's, she seems, she's already on the Affordable Housing Collaborative. We did interview her, but not for this role, but, and she is an architect, so she's certainly qualified and interesting and skilled, so I'd just like that opportunity. Thank you.
All right. That's going to bring us to new business, item 12A. A resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for order a notice of a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance that would add a third alternate member to the zoning board review as follows. Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 9, Administration, Enforcement, and Relief.
Make a motion to approve item, new business, item 12A.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. It's going to bring us to item B, a resolution authorizing an amendment to the town council rules of conduct that would add Rule 18, placement of correspondence on agenda as follows. Proposed amendments to the town council rules of conduct add Rule 18. Mike, we're going to turn it over to you here to kind of talk us through this. Mike, we're going to turn it over to you here to kind of talk us through this.
Sure. We've been in a new age for a long time where we communicate by email, and there have been questions over the last six months in particular about how does the council or the administration determine which items that come in actually make it to the council agenda versus which items don't? And it's important that we have consistency in answering that response. So it's my recommendation that you actually add to your rules of conduct in item, it would be a new section 18, that would specify that items that require council action would, of course, go on the agenda if you had to vote on something. Items that come in complaining about a pothole that go to the administration, that'll get taken care of by a department. That doesn't need to go on the agenda. Items that involve personnel issues or items that are personal in nature would generally be kept off the agenda. If there are questions about, hey, you know, where does this particular item fall, it would go to the manager's office and, if necessary, to the solicitor's office to make a determination. That way, you will not be in a position of having 50, 60, 70, 100 emails on your agenda every meeting, because it's not practical. And if someone feels very strongly about something during public forum, they have every right to come here and bring it up, and you can discuss it. But up until now, the policy has been kind of verbal. It's not been straightforward where everyone knows that they can go somewhere and look and say, oh, there's the council's policy. So it's the language I propose. It's for you to consider. I try to get taken to consideration best practices from other communities, and this is what I have come up with to propose to you for discussion and if you desire adoption.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Any thoughts from the council members here?
Can we add something if you are going to not place it on the agenda that you communicate back to the resident? Feel free to come to the microphone, like if you're Ms. Flynn, thank you for your email. This item is not going to be on the agenda, but please, we invite you to please come forward if you choose at the next meeting, because I think that that's what happens, is they go into a black hole, and then it sounds like people don't know why, and then they don't get a redirect.
But we will still get those emails, right? So we can still respond to them.
But we are not the decision maker.
Right.
So should the town clerk just say, we invite you to July 11th, come to conference from interested citizens and say what you want?
What about like an automatic reply? Some administratively easy? I don't know. This sounds like.
Oh, yeah.
We currently have an automatic reply set up, which we have tweaked recently to go out to every email that comes in telling them that their communication's been received. Based on the deadline, it'll be placed on the next town council agenda, so that people are aware that their communication actually got somewhere. We would have to revise that response to reflect that certain items will be determined to be on the agenda, others may not, based on your rules, that we'll have to develop something that reflects whatever you decide for a ruling, so people are aware when they send something.
I think you're, I think you've got it, Susan, that the new automatic reply would say that based on these criteria, right, it will be determined whether your email would be on the agenda, right? And so we have the criteria in front of us, perhaps, right?
Just thinking out loud, in our work with Susan, if you adopt this, one option is to simply, if you adopt this, will just add the rule to the reply.
Right.
This explains exactly what's going to go there and what's not. And then if there's a subsequent issue, it can be discussed or whatever. And I think to Deb's point, we could also add a line that's saying, you know, public, you know, you could come to public forum at any time to discuss.
Right.
We could put, we could put a nice little phrase in there about public forum.
And this wouldn't eliminate any council member from having received an email.
No, 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 no.
Saying, I'd like to request that that appear on the agenda.
Any council member always has that ability to do that.
Right. This does not shut that off. So any one of us could bring up an issue if we felt strongly about it, have it on the agenda, so it could be discussed.
And if I felt, as solicitor, there was a liability issue, I would discuss that, of course, directly with the council member making the request.
Right.
So I don't know if this is what you were referencing, but we could put it right under where, you know, we list some of the rules that, of our conduct here on the first page of the agenda each meeting. Could do item four under five there, rule 18, yada, yada. This is what gets your communication on the agenda. And, you know, in general, I'm supportive of this for a while. I mean, I guess maybe it was unwritten, but this is the way we did it for many, many years.
It's been difficult for me and the community to be explaining this over and over again to members of the public, which is why I'm thinking we should have something.
Yeah. But over, so over the past maybe three years, I think Rob sort of had this notion of, you know, radical transparency, we're just going to put it all on the agenda. So people have grown accustomed to that in a way. So I just think we need to make it clear to people, we're not like ignoring you now. We just need to have rules that make our meetings function and our staff able to process all the communications.
When I first sat here, the emails weren't on the agenda. It was just written communication, and then there was a link, right, to, these are all the emails we received during the past two weeks.
It was like a log?
It was a log. And I remember advocating for emails to be treated like written communication, because the world had changed somewhat. So perhaps we could still do that, is have that link to, here's everything we received. I mean, everything was there, like, you know, except for spam, every email was in that link.
Right. So if we were to do that, I would still want to exclude personnel issues and personal items. It's important language that's in the.
I would agree. I mean, we don't want to disparage people, you know, have it, have it be that kind of a forum. But if someone sent the email about the pothole, perhaps they would like to know that someone else out there might want to say, gee, I can send an email about a pothole, right? So, I don't know, having all the emails that are received available somewhere.
Sure. And Susan's pointing out.
Without the Freedom of Information Act, right? Without having to.
Understood. And Susan's pointing out that maybe a way that it's happened in the past can be done is you get a weekly manager's report, and maybe the link would be there, just so that, and then, of course, that's part of your agenda, so people can go back and look. So there's a way to deal with that.
All right.
I don't, I'm not sure if I understood it completely, so I just want to go back for a second. I kind of want to know if a resident's like, there's a problem on my street and the tree has been down, or this is the, I want to see it, and then for someone to say, it's not going to appear on the agenda, but we've referred it to so-and-so, lands and grounds or highway, whatever, whatever it is. So that we're going to see, it's just going to be not on a public agenda, but we'll see the tree problem, right?
You're going to see them all, and, and just like I said, so if the tree warden can take care of that, there's no need for you to have a formal vote on it. However, you certainly can do exactly what you just said, that, you know, where are we're and it's being addressed.
Right. It's the other pieces. I think people are using the agenda to spread their agenda, whatever that is. And so our work agenda isn't a political forum for you to take issue with us. We can be, you know, I don't like what Deb said. She doesn't know anything about growing marijuana, so, right? I don't. So that, this isn't the forum to write that letter. You could write that letter to the paper, but you're not going to put me on blast for that. That's, I think, what is the removal piece, right? So the opportunity is to go.
That's right. You will all get that email, so you'll all know that someone thinks Deb doesn't know anything about marijuana. But that's not something the council needs to act on and take a vote on.
Right.
That's, we're trying to keep your business to town business that you can act on. But you will see all of them, and anyone from the public who wants to see them will also see them. And anyone who doesn't see it on the agenda could come to this microphone and bring it up.
Right. They could come.
Fine.
All right. Had good discussion on this. Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve 12B. Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. That's going to bring us to item C, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment to an award of bid originally authorized on June 28, 2021, to Republic Services of Fall River, Massachusetts for sludge transportation at the unit cost of $325 per round trip to the RIRRC Central Landfill Facility and $450 per round trip to the SYNAGRO Wound Socket Incinerator Facility for the period ending June 30, 2023, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June 9, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. It's going to bring us to item D, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment to an award of bid originally granted on May 26, 2015, and amended on June 11, 2018, June 24, 2019, July 27, 2020, and June 14, 2021, to Uvelia Water North America Northeast LLC of Boston, Massachusetts for on-call stormwater and sanitary sewer infrastructure cleaning and video services at the unit prices bid for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June 9, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. Item E is a resolution authorizing an award of bid for drainage, concrete curb, retaining wall materials to the following bidders at the unit prices bid, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June 14, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12E.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. F is a resolution authorizing an award of bid for miscellaneous road building materials to the following bidders at the unit prices, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June 14, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12F.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. Item G is a resolution authorizing a sixth and seventh amendment to a contract with Synagro Northeast LLC of Baltimore, Maryland, originally awarded on October 11, 2005 for municipal wastewater sludge transportation, incineration, and disposal, and as further described in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June 16, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12G.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. Item H is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the residential bulky waste disposal fee at the Roseville Regional Transfer Station from 60 cents per pound to 77.5 cents per pound, $5 minimum effective July 1, 2022, and amending the town scheduled fees as further detailed in a memorandum from the Public Services Director to the Town Manager dated June 23, 2022.
I have a question about that.
John, come on up.
All right, John. Not that this would happen, but what if, what if this was voted down? And, I mean, because I'm just thinking, like, this is where every, you're throwing away your couch, and they charge you whatever. So what if we had, what if we said no? Just, we're not going to pass that.
So this issue is, the first time this has come up, and I've been here since, you know, 1986, and for whatever reason, and I haven't been able to get what I would consider a straight answer on a resource recovery, they now want to have us separate municipal from commercial waste, which we logistically can't do at the transfer station. So their return is that they want all the waste, so commercial and residential, which to me is kind of contrary to the state guide plan to preserve the landfill capacity. So we're really between a rock and a hard place. We don't have any options. And because Waste Connections cannot seek those alternate disposal sites for the commercial, or I say commercial, the non-traditional municipal waste, they have to pay a higher tip to get rid of the residential bulky. So this is just a pass-through for them. They're not making any additional revenue on this. So we're, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place on this, this issue. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but that's kind of the background on why we're, we're at with this modification to the bulky, bulky residential waste.
Thank you, John.
Did that answer your question? Did that answer your question?
Not, not really.
So if we didn't pass this, would we, would the town have to make up that difference that people aren't paying?
I would say so, because, I mean, we can't expect Waste Connections to pay the higher tip fee and not be reimbursed for it.
So then we would just pass it on to taxpayers more diffusely as people going with bulky waste? But, I don't know. I support this motion.
No, I do, I do too. I just.
I would still like to be able to take the non-traditional municipal waste to the alternative markets that are more competitive, which Waste Connections have been doing. This is, this is something brand new from Resource Recovery, and I think something that we need to still have a further dialogue with them on.
So how, so how do we have that? How do we, how do we continue the conversation? Because.
I mean, we've asked them to come down and meet with us to, so we can explain the process. I mean, we can't afford to build another transfer station dedicated for municipal waste. You know, the other option, maybe we try to legislate legislation so they can't do this to us. But again, that's something that we need to think about down the road. It's not going to help us right now.
I don't really, municipal waste is.
So municipal waste is your traditional daily municipal waste. Lawn chairs, you know, patio umbrellas, patio, that's not considered the traditional municipal waste, and that has to get tipped at a non-municipal fee.
So it's like what doesn't go in the little receptacle if you have.
Normal daily waste is municipal waste. Anything that's, people get rid of that are beyond that is not considered traditional municipal waste. That gets tipped at the non-municipal rate at the transfer station.
We, we just need to advocate better that, in the future, that we don't want to pay the same rate for municipal waste as bulky waste?
So by state law, all municipal waste has, traditional municipal waste has to go to Resource Recovery. It's the non-municipal waste and commercial waste that in the past, we've sought alternate disposal markets, which can be out of state, it's not required to go to landfill, and those, that pricing is more competitive than the tip fee at Central Landfill. But now Resource Recovery is going to require us to bring all waste to Central Landfill.
So I'm a dump user, right? So when I go there, because I can throw the metal away, I can throw the.
The scrap metal, rigid.
That's what you're talking about is now all going to be?
So scrap metal, we have a dumpster for scrap metal, we have one for rigid plastics. That's still available, and that's free.
So they're still going to tip, they're going to take those separately?
Correct.
That's not included in this?
But material that comes over the scale, residential material, you know, again, old lawn furniture, something that's not recyclable, that we have to pay to dispose of, that's going to be at the new disposal fee.
Gotcha.
All right. Any other questions for John?
You didn't think it was going to be that exciting, did you?
John, we were going to miss you. We were going to miss you, I know that.
There's a lot there, John. It wasn't just about the 77 and.
Thank you, John. All right, do I hear a motion on this one?
Motion to approve item 12H.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. It's going to bring us to item I, which is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Ben's Uniforms Incorporated of Amesbury, Massachusetts for the purchase of Blower Uniform Garments for the Police Department at the unit prices bid for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, with the option to extend one additional year through June 30, 2024, inclusive, if mutually agreeable, to both parties, and as further described in a memorandum from the interim police chief to the Town Manager dated June 13, 2022. through June 30, 2024, inclusive, if mutually agreeable, to both parties, and as further described in a memorandum from the interim police chief to the Town Manager dated June 13, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion passes. It's gonna bring us to item K, which is a resolution authorizing the Town Manager to execute an extension agreement with power options of Boston, Massachusetts, and Constellation New Energy of Boston, Massachusetts, for the purchase of electricity for municipal facilities under the Rhode Island Energy Aggregate Program, as participating member of the Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns for the period December 1, 2023, through December 2025, and as further described in a memorandum from the facility superintendent to the Town Manager dated June 21, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12K.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion passes. It's gonna bring us to item L, which we'd like to continue.
Motion to continue item L.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that item is continued to the next meeting. It's gonna bring us to item M, a resolution authorizing the abatement of uncollectible tangible personal property taxes for 2011 in the amount of $11,117.11 and uncollectible motor vehicle taxes for 2011 in the amount of $22,892.35 for a combined total of uncollectible taxes in the amount of $34,009.46, as further described in a memorandum from the interim finance director to the Town Manager dated June 22, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12M.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed?
I'll just note that that's a very minuscule amount of the total taxable tax levy of the town, so congratulations to our finance department for continuing to have a, a great record of collecting, and our people of paying.
Well said. Alright, anyone opposed? Alright, that passes. Item N, a resolution authorizing tax collection procedures, as shown on exhibit 1 attached here, too.
I have a question on that.
Right.
Is that what Jim was discussing in the work session, the OPEB?
Oh, that's a few items down.
I'll hold.
Motion to approve item 12N.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion passes. Item O is a resolution authorizing a fund transfer in the amount of $238,900 to the Other Post-Employment Benefits Trust Fund, OPEB, as further described in a memorandum from the interim finance director to the Town Manager dated June 22, 2022. Do I hear a motion? Jim, do you wanna provide a little bit on this?
As council president, in speaking with the interim finance director, she allocated $238,900 to be transferred to our OPEB liability. That this, so once again, we, we are anticipating a surplus that we gave you in May of $272,000. This, this amount does not come from that amount, it is in addition to that amount, so really, 272 that we're projecting that there will be a surplus, the 238 is money that was allocated from what the surplus would be, so at this point, there's really, it would not come from the 272. The 272 is a moving number right now, because of, everything's so volatile with the market and so forth, that, that number could change.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim on this?
So the 272, 856 is the projected surplus, and that's just going right into the undesignated fund, it's not set aside for road repair, or?
That's correct, because, because the number is so, once again, it, it, it's not hot and fast, and that number could change, so we are just gonna not recommend any transfers at this point.
Because in the, in the past, they.
Number was much larger, yes.
Your market into different little areas. Okay, so it's just a general transfer to the fund?
Yes.
And then 238, we had budgeted in the budget that we adopted, or is it, was it a little more, and we're doing a little less?
Well, I, so I talked to Rose about that, so she didn't use the word budget, she used allocated, so it was money that she anticipated would become from the surplus, that we do have a surplus, so that, that's where that money's coming from. So she used the word budget and allocate universally, but it was money we were counting on to go to OPEB, the answer is yes.
So in the budget that we adopted in May, an allocation to OPEB was.
For that amount, yes.
And that was the amount we allocated, or do we allocate?
That is the amount we allocated, yes.
That's with the little bit of the reduction that we took, because we took a little tiny reduction, we spent a lot of time on, right? Yep. So.
So is, is this in the past budget, or was it, because the budget we pass is for the next fiscal year? Is this, this is from the past budget that we?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you. Gotcha.
Right. Do I hear a motion on this?
Motion to approve item 12O.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion passes. It's gonna bring us to item P, which is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Southern Rhode Island Newspapers, doing business as the Narragansett Times of Wakefield, for municipal advertising services commencing July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025, with the option to extend for two additional years at the unit prices bid, and in accordance with all bidding specifications, and as further described in a memorandum from the town clerk to the Town Manager dated June 22, 2022.
Motion to approve item 12P.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion passes, and that will bring us to the end of the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Alright, that passes, that brings us to the end, thank you for everyone's time, see you next time.